Hi, I'm Pat Thatcher.
I'm Margaret Gifford. We work for the global real estate company Sotheby's International Realty.
Margaret, how long have you been in real estate?
About 200 years. How about you?
I'm coming up on it. What is the real estate market like right now, Margaret?
Well, interest rates are very favorable. There's great inventory and it is a good time for buyer and sellers.
And you know, Falmouth is so wonderful. Not only is it a beautiful place, but there are so many outdoor activities, cultural events, and opportunities to volunteer.
Isn't Falmouth great?
Remember, WC Communications is your printing team. We are calm and cool under pressure. You can call us at (508) 563-7366 or toll-free at (1-800) 696-7303.
And please rise and join me in the public hearings.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes, my doctor knows I'm here. So, welcome back, Pat. Thank you very much. I dare say that was not an uneventful two weeks while I was gone. I also want to remind those of you who have cell phones, if you would please either put them on vibrate or turn them off. And if you have any desire to tape the meeting, just please speak up and say that you wish to do that. If hearing none, then we will move forward with the agenda. We want to begin with a public hearing. Notice is hereby given under Chapter 138 of the general laws as amended that the Avenue Seafood and Pizzeria LLC doing business as the Avenue Seafood Bar and Grill has applied for a new season all alcoholic commendation or license to be exercised at 465 Grand Avenue Falmouth, Mass. The hearing will be held in the selectmen's meeting room, Falmouth Town Hall, on Monday, May 7, 2012, at 7:00 PM on the above application. For the applicant.
I'm Madam Chairman, if I might first.
Yes, please.
Disclosure that I'm the holder of an all-alcoholic seasonal liquor license. Thank you.
Eric Turgington, local attorney, representing the applicant. And I have the return of the notices. The applicant walked in the door 10 minutes ago and I can't, I don't know where they've gone since, but they're in the building. If you find them, that would be good. Anyway, this property has been a restaurant for quite a long time, since 2001 when it was purchased by the Redino family. And it's been run as a small family restaurant ever since. And a couple of years ago, the license was transferred to another operator who turned out not to be as successful as he thought he was going to be. And so, we're here to transfer the license back to the Redino family, in this case to Mrs. Redino, who is going to be the manager and operator. And her husband obviously owns the building, she and her sons are going to be the operators. We were here, last time we were here was to transfer from the previous operator. That license did not make it all the way through the Department of Revenue's review. So, that transfer did not take place. So, we're here for a fresh start with Mrs. Redino running it as they have in the past.
Okay, is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor of this license? Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to the license? Any none? Questions, comments on the board?
Eric, you kept referring to transfer. This is a new license, not a transfer.
This is a new license. Right. The transfer did not take place. The old license expired. This is a new license.
Okay, so this is a brand-new license. Next question is hours of operation?
For the last 10 years, it's been 8:00 AM until 10:00 PM weekdays and 12:00 to 10:00 PM Sundays. And we'd be happy to keep those the same.
12:00 to 10:00 on Sundays. Okay. That's all I had for questions.
Any other questions?
Make a motion, Madam Chairman, that we approve the all-alcoholic...
Oh, wait a minute. Go ahead. Melissa, do you have a question?
Yes, quick question. Will all servers be certified?
They will.
Okay, thank you. I think before we make the motion, we should decide to close the hearing if we feel we have all the information we have.
Motion to close the hearing.
So, the motion to close the hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, with the hearing closed, a motion to approve...
Make a motion to approve an all-alcoholic seasonal liquor license for Avenue Seafood and Pizzeria LLC, DBA, the Avenue Seafood Bar and Grill, with hours of operation from 8:00 AM to 10:00 PM, Monday through Saturday, and 12:00 PM to 10:00 PM on Sundays.
A second. Okay. Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And good luck to the new owners. That would be great to have that back on Grand Avenue.
I'll tell them the good news as soon as I find them.
Okay, the next item is an application for a special event, the 35th Annual Paul Wright Memorial Road Race on July 7.
She's not Scotty.
Yes, hi, how are you?
Hi, good, thank you. Thank you for having us. Priscilla Garrity and I'm 229 Old Main Road in North Falmouth and the current president of the North Falmouth Village Association. This is our 35th running of the annual Paul Wright Memorial Road Race. And I have applications. I have all kinds of information. I'd be happy to give each one of you one. Do you have questions or...
Does anyone...
We know this is...
Am I here for a reason? An annual event.
Yeah.
I don't know if anyone... Does any board member have a question?
I just want to know if Kevin's going to run. This is the part you run for the North Falmouth...
Honorary runner. There you go.
That's exactly. I am a North Falmouth resident that runs right by my sister's house and I'm happy to hand water out. Mike, the only question I have, what is the number of runners ballpark? I know it's always been...
We limit it to 600, but we rarely have more than 300.
Right, okay.
Rain or shine. And we have different divisions, age divisions, and we also have a wheelchair division. We have a 70 and up division. We award everyone trophies for...
Quick question. Yes, is it the same track as last year, the same route?
4.8 miles, same track. Start and end on Chester Street, run around the village. We have police that help us. We have EMTs that follow up. We've got a pickup truck with a doctor who follows along behind.
I just noticed that, you know, in the previous years, we've had a little hand drawing of the route, maybe next year, just to remind the board.
Okay, hand drawing. I don't have it, but I'm sure you could find it on our website.
Oh, yeah.
And we, of course, the morning of, we put out, this is the way you go. Yeah.
Madam Chairman, I just want to make a comment that this is, we have many events in the town. This particular road race is, really has a huge representation from the village of North Falmouth, whether it be Silver Beach, McGanson, or North Falmouth proper. I know that it's an annual event for so many people who live there in the summers as well as year-round as well.
Indeed, and this is our major fundraiser for the North Falmouth Village Association, raising funds for scholarships. And we usually annually give out about $4,000 or $5,000 in scholarship.
Make a motion to approve?
I'll second that. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good to see you, Priscilla.
Thank you.
Okay, while we're on races or bicycles or good health or whatever, there's a Falmouth Bike Festival coming up on May 12th, this Saturday, at the Lawrence School, beginning at 10:00 AM. And this is put on by the Bike Waste Committee. There are going to be safety checks, helmet fitting stations for all ages, bike safety check stations, little educational pieces in improving one's riding skills by completing some skill courses, traffic skills for riders over 10 years old and adults, of course, who probably need it more than the 10-year-olds. And all skill courses are followed by an adult-guided ride. Helmets are absolutely mandatory for this. And everyone who is truly interested or ought to be interested should really come and attend this. This is a great event at the Lawrence School, 10:00 AM, this Saturday, May 12th. And I have some extra posters if some of you would like to take one with you and post it at a place of your choice. Okay, where is our Water Quality Management Committee? They're out on the patio having the discussion. But...
Here they come.
Here they come. Okay, the next item is a request on behalf of the Water Quality Management Committee. And this, the first one, has to do with authorizing the use of Article 17 mitigation funds to amend the comprehensive wastewater management contract to provide construction estimated cost to sewer Little Pond area in the amount of $8,536. Who wants to speak on that? Jerry?
I'm Jerry Potamus, wastewater superintendent. What the intent here is to refine the costs for the first phase of the program. As you know, initially, we had, we were going to sewer all the lower peninsulas and part of the upper peninsulas because that was the interpretation of how the TMDL would be reviewed and how the CWMP would be approved. It was about a month ago or so where DEP had indicated that given, they were giving us flexibility. Part of the reason, I think, they realized it takes quite a while to spend that type of money. And they really wanted us to look at adaptive management. And essentially, what they said was, you know, if we looked at the first watershed and its totality, that they'd be happy and we had language that we'd proceed on with adaptive management. One of the things we needed to do to bring back to the community was what is a more realistic cost for the Little Pond watershed? And essentially, this is a contract amendment so that we can break out the cost for Little Pond. And hopefully, when we go forward, it will be a closer to reality cost of what the next phase will be. It should not be 200 or 300 million for Little Pond. In fact, we intend to use all the existing infrastructure that we have. Obviously, there'll be some pipes connected to a particular manhole. The exact connection is not known. But the capital cost won't include any treatment and essentially include the infrastructure costs for conventional sewer in Little Pond. And by conventional sewer, that will also mean low-pressure sewers for the, when the homes are below the sewer, you might have to pump up to them. So, that's what that intent was. Eric, do you have anything else?
If I can, I'd like to hand out copies of the Article 17 that was taken up at the town meeting last April because I think it helps to paint the picture of where this particular piece fits in.
Good, thank you. That would be helpful.
Now, as you know, the directions we got from town meeting last April were to look at everything and to look at shellfish cultivation, to look at pond opening, channel opening, to look at permeable reactive barriers, to look at road runoff, to look at composting toilets, to look at sewer, to look at everything with an idea to see what would be the most effective, most publicly acceptable, and most affordable options for this town and for each of our water bodies. We have before you tonight several RFPs that cover several of these demonstration projects. And we also have before you tonight this very small engineering piece to design a sewer for the Little Pond watershed. Now, for $8,000, you're not going to get a sewer designed. What we're getting for the $8,000 here is an estimate of what it would cost using traditional sewer methods to deal with that one particular watershed. It's not a commitment by this committee or the town or anyone else to do that. It's strictly a commitment to price it. That becomes our yardstick to measure all these other options against. If shellfish turn out to produce more nitrogen reduction for less money, we're going to like shellfish. If permeable reactive barriers produce more nitrogen reduction for less money, we're going to be for permeable reactive barriers. Wherever the dollars and the nitrogen lead us is where this committee wants to go. But one of the requirements the town meeting gave us was to look at sewers too. We're not going to do this with no sewers anywhere. Some people would wish that to be true. Maybe it will be true, but I doubt it very much. But the least sewer-ing is going to be the best sewer-ing as far as we're concerned. But to know what sewer-ing is going to cost compared to what all these other options are going to cost, we have to have a dollar figure attached to a particular potential sewer area. Doesn't mean this is the only sewer area. Doesn't mean this is going to be a sewer area. Just means we'll have a dollar figure to compare it to. So, when all these other options are evaluated and priced, we'll know what we're talking about.
Melissa?
I actually just have a quick technical question here. I understand completely that we need to know what it's going to cost so that we can plan it better. But out of all of these lists and the breakdowns we have here, from whence do you think the $8,500 should be skimmed from the engineering?
Right, the CWMP preliminary design engineering.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Just wanted to confirm that. Thank you.
You know, I just have to say that the amount of work that your committee does is really amazing and extraordinary. I mean, it is so technical and to me, it requires so much. Everybody can't know everything. And I know that there's an amazing learning curve for all the members of the committee. But the fact that you take on these tasks, and I think how this was presented to us, we were asked to look at everything and we have. And if we want to make decisions about how to move forward in terms of which applications that we should actually use, whether it's sewer-ing, like you say, or the permeable reactive barriers, or whatever it might be, there has to be a way to actually measure how that would happen. And I just have to commend the work of the committee because I just think for people who have volunteered their time to take on a major, major project like this deserves a great deal of gratitude. So, thank you all very much for that.
Well, thank you and thank you for some of the appointments here. You gave us one of the world's experts on shellfish propagation who advises countries when he's not advising us, just came back from Vietnam on that subject. You gave us Steve Rafferty, who does this for a living for one of the most prestigious engineering companies in the country, and he's giving us his time for free. You gave us Virginia. Everyone on this committee has, you gave us Matt Patrick, who is a remarkable advocate for eco-toilets. You gave us a great spectrum of expertise that frankly, this town couldn't pay for if it were paying for it. But we're all learning a lot about each other's expertise and we're learning a lot that hopefully will do the towns in good.
Questions from the board? Kevin?
It's not so much a question, it's a comment. As we moved into this, there were a lot of preconceived notions by various groups within the community. And unless we get all of this information, information like this, where we're moving forward on parallel tracks, we're not going to be able to make an educated decision. And I think it's important that when all is said and done, we can put it all on the table and then as a community, make that decision. But unless we have all the pieces to the puzzle and we do research on each and every one of the alternatives, including sewer-ing, that it's important for us to make those value judgments. So, I appreciate that.
That's exactly right, and that's what we're trying to do.
Any other questions for our... Ron, did you have a comment?
Yeah, just a brief comment.
Brief comment? Okay, sure.
Thank you. Also, thanks very much, Ron Swig, also a member of the committee. And I think that I just want to say that the committee, basically, the viewpoint is that we support all of the items that are before you this evening, obviously, as Eric has pointed out. On the first item, though, concerning Little Pond, one thing I just would like to bring to your attention is we are in advisory capacity, is that what this study will do, will consider the cost for that, for a particular area of about 1,000, over 1,000 units in the Little Pond area. That the current sewer capacity or coverage is about 690. So, it's a rather large component, relatively speaking to what we've had in the past. And a critical element in that, though, is we know that affluent management at the site, at the place where our treatment site where this is planned to go, is still a question. And there are certain costs related to that that this study will not necessarily bring out. So, we need to move forward as well in looking at the, you know, where is the, you know, sort of where's it going and how's it going to be managed at that end and what the costs are related to that as well. So, I think that that's an important dimension that needs to be, just to keep in mind that it's not the whole picture. You'll be getting, you'll be getting an important piece regarding a sewer option, but it won't be the full one. So, thank you.
Very well. Are we ready to vote on item number, item number four? aquaculture, feel it's important to disclose that I own a restaurant that uses quite a bit of shellfish, so I just want to put a disclosure there.
Okay.
Great, thank you. Okay, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye opposed, unanimous. Five in favor. And the next part of that is the MOU with the county. This is...
Do we have two more motions I think we need? Don't we need to make an, issue an RFP for the aquaculture demonstration project and also for the permeable reactive barrier demonstration project? Those are three separate activities.
Which one are you looking at?
I'm still looking at number one. We've only made a motion for the first one. So I'd like to move that we...
Wait a minute, wait a minute. I'm not clear where you are. Are you on item four?
Two, item one.
Wait a minute. Item four or item five on the agenda?
I'm looking at five, A, part two, because there are three RFPs that need to be written. One for Oyster Pond.
So you're...
Which we've just done. And now I'm going to make a motion that we have the town manager issue an RFP for the aquaculture demonstration project?
Wrap them all to one.
You want to wrap them all into one motion? Fine, I'll wrap the other two into one motion.
You can't do the one on the...
No, I won't do part two.
All right.
Okay, so I'll move that we have the town manager issue an RFP for both the aquaculture demonstration project and also the permeable reactive barrier demonstration project.
Second.
Discussion. See, I think what happened was, I didn't mean to take Oyster Pond out separately on that item. It should have all been included in the same motion.
Okay, well...
The Oyster Pond, the aquaculture, and reactive barrier were all part of the motion that we just took, that vote was all, that's item A. We just voted item A that included all of that.
Okay, well, my verbiage didn't say that, but I'll amend my verbiage to say that. My verbiage just said for Oyster Pond CWMP study.
All right.
I made the motion for the study, for the first one. And now the second one is for the two demonstration projects. But theoretically, we're doing three RFPs.
It should have all been included as, I mean, when we voted item A, all of that was included in item A. If you don't think it was included, then make your motion for the aquaculture and the permeable reactive barrier, and we will add that as part of item A.
I just did, and Kevin just seconded it.
All right, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, unanimous. Great. Then part B, that's signing the MOU with the county for the compost toilet and gray water systems in the amount of $50,000. Discussion.
Make a motion to approve?
I'll second.
All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye opposed, I shall abstain. Okay, so it's four to, four in favor and one abstention. All right. That was good. Thank you. Keep up the good work.
We'll be back.
I'm sure you will. Okay, okay, now we have 15 minutes.
Work on the summary of actions. Summary of actions.
Ms. Ray not here? Well, we have, Mrs. Rhodes.
Oh, we got the summary, I believe the REI lady is here. Yep, the REI lady's here.
I'm chair, shall we take it?
Summary of actions.
Summary of actions. Yeah.
I just wanted to make sure that... All right, so we're going to move to the summary of actions. And item one is to sign the warrant for the annual town election, which obviously is being held next week on May 15.
Do we need to hold that to read it into the record so that people know or not?
In the name of the Commonwealth, you are hereby required to notify and warn the inhabitants of said town who are qualified to vote in the annual town election to vote at precinct one, Town Hall, precinct two, Gus Candy Recreation Center, precinct three, Teeticket Elementary School, precinct four, East Falmouth Elementary School, precinct five, North Falmouth Congregational Church Hall, precinct six, Morse Pond School, precinct seven, La Croye Congregational Church Hall, precinct eight, the Navigator Club, precinct nine, Howe, Precinct Athletic League, formerly the Knights of Columbus. On Tuesday, the 15th of May, 2012, from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. for the following purpose, to cast their votes in the town election for the candidates and question. Moderator elect one, three-year term. Board of Selectmen elect one, three-year term. Trustee of the public library elect three, three-year term. School committee elect three, three-year term. Planning board elect two, three-year term. Planning board elect one, one-year term. Town meeting representatives, precinct one, elect 27. Precinct two, elect 27. Precinct three, elect nine for a three-year term. Precinct four, nine, a three-year term. Precinct five, nine, a three-year term. Precinct six, elect 27. Precinct seven, nine for a three-year term. Precinct seven, one for a two-year term. Precinct eight, elect 27. Precinct nine, elect 27. Those 27 precincts are due to redistricting. And shall the town of Falmouth be allowed, this is the question, shall the town of Falmouth be allowed to assess an additional $800,000 in real estate and personal property taxes for the purposes of funding a capital improvement stabilization fund for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2012? Hereauf fail, knock, and make return of this warrant with your doings thereon in the time and place of said voting given under our hands the 7th day of May, 2012. Discussion. Anything you want to say about the ballot question? Kevin?
I think it's very important that everybody out there understand that this is a short-range plan for us to fund our capital improvement plan. And in doing so, in voting this $800,000, although it would be funded by tax revenue, your taxes would not increase because there is retiring debt of $800,000 currently there. That debt is retiring this year, and this $800,000 would merely take that place. This is important for our infrastructure, our roads, our sidewalks, and valuable capital needs in the community, including beaches, harbors, and the Department of Public Works. Many of the things, the equipment that runs each and every day-to-day operation in this town, has been left a little idle in the last few years in the form of being able to maintain it properly because of budget constraints. So I think it's important that everybody out there understand that there are ramifications if this does not go through. It's important to this community to be able to have the bricks, the mortar, to be able to accomplish the work that we have. We have many skilled laborers, skilled town employees, but unless we can give them the tools to do their job, which is in fact the supplies, it is not going to do us any good. We need to be able to get this funding to move the town forward in our capital needs. And I appreciate everybody considering that. Thank you.
Is there a motion to approve the annual town election warrant?
So move.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, unanimous. Okay, the second one is Zero Moses Road, Silver Beach, a vote to permit new Silver Beach Homeowners Association through Falmouth Energy to submit a notice of intent for grooming of the beach.
Hold.
Hold. Next is approval request for special events, the REI Bike Tour, Shining Sea Bike Path, line 13. Hold.
Hold.
Approved request for special agricultural liquor license. Approved request for one day, hold. Approved request for wedding permit, Rivera Ferrera, Woodnet Beach, October 6, 2012. Approved request for a wedding permit, Woodward Surf Drive Beach, May 20, 2012. And then we approve and we want to hold the seasonal process through yours. Okay, back to Silver Beach. Mr. Murphy.
Should we move the wedding permits?
All right, a motion to approve six and seven.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Sorry.
Madam Chairman, on number two, Moses Road, just for disclosure purposes, I'm a property owner on Moses Road. I own a small beach lot there, so I just wanted to disclose that they're one of the petitioners for grading that beach.
And actually, I wanted to hold it because I just wanted to point out that this is actually just for them to apply to the Conservation Commission for permitting. This does not in any way influence the Conservation Commission in their judgment, which we can probably guess what it will be.
Is to submit a notice of intent.
Yeah.
Right. Are there any other questions on that?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, unanimous. Okay, the bike tours. Are you here from REI?
REI.
Yeah, would you like to come up to the microphone and introduce yourself?
Yes.
Good.
So hi, my name's Leigh Jackson McGinnis, and I am representing REI. It stands for Recreational Equipment Incorporated. And I'm here tonight to talk to you a little bit about an idea we have that we'd like you to consider, which is we'd like to have a bike tour with the town of Falmouth on the Shining Sea Bike Way. And so I came here to talk to you a little bit about REI and answer any questions you may have. So I'll give you just a brief story about REI. REI is a member-owned cooperative, so it's owned by its members. We started in 1938 with 21 mountaineers, and they were trying to buy, find out how to buy cheap equipment. So essentially, they all got together and figured out how to do it, how to benefit themselves. And we've grown out of that. We now have 3.5 million members. We have five stores in this market alone. I run, as the market manager, I run all of the outreach for REI in these, out of these five stores in this Boston market. So we have stores in Cranston, Rhode Island. We have a store in Hingham that's the closest here to Falmouth. We have Framingham. We have Reading and Boston. So we have quite a big market here, and we're growing every day. And we're stretching a little bit of our educational efforts and our outreach efforts down towards the Cape. And I'm approaching you first to see if you all be interested in letting us host a bike tour. And it gets to the education part of our mission. Quickly, we, our mission is to inspire, educate, and outfit for a lifetime of adventure and stewardship. So this gets to that educational mission.
Melissa?
Thanks, Pat. I think it's a fantastic idea, but I have some concerns. I'm very familiar with REI. I have a four-digit member number.
You're kidding!
My mother-in-law was one of the original members in Seattle in the 50s.
Yes.
So...
That's excellent.
Yeah. But as such, I know that REI is a huge shop out west.
Yes.
Bigger than, the one in Seattle and the one in Anchorage are just bigger than any market you've ever, I mean, they're Home Depot sized.
Right.
And so this is a huge organization. This isn't just, you know, small little bike tours. It's definitely a national organization. And my concern, I have, I think it's a fantastic idea, I mean, that you want to use the Shining Sea Bike Way as one of your tours. And I know that in our Economic Development Committee meetings, we've been talking and we've been seeing a trend as Falmouth as like a recreational destination community, something like that. And it sounds like it would align, but my concern is that the way the application is written and the way the letter is written, you're requesting five dates already this summer. And, you know, some of the responses came from, well, these are small tours, but nothing says these are small tours. It says REI has a small teacher-to-participant ratios and expect eight to 12 people total, including REI instructors. But that's per person, and there's nothing here that says that you're not going to have five or 10 tours going at once on our...
Okay, no, thank you. So I'm sorry for that.
On our bike paths.
You are right. It does not probably say that exactly. So it is a small tour. We're looking for eight to 12 people total each of those dates.
So you're looking for one tour, one...
So once a month, we'd like to offer a family-friendly bike tour here in the town of Falmouth.
It makes me feel a lot better to hear that, because knowing how huge REI is, I mean...
Right. We are doing bike tours international, I mean nationally here through REI outreach and outdoor programs, but not, that is not the plan for Falmouth.
Okay, so you're looking for one group tour, once a month?
Once a month. That's right. Eight to 12 people, that's it.
Okay.
So do you have a plan for Falmouth, like a long-term plan, or is this something you want to experiment with?
Well, I'd like to experiment with it and see if it's successful and see if we can pull people either here or meet the needs of the community that's already here. And then we'll see. Again, I'm excited about this community. I've been here in this area now for two years, and I'm thrilled with it. It's gorgeous. It is, it represents REI well, and it represents the Cape well and Massachusetts well, and I just want to showcase it right now. So I don't have any long-term plans.
Right, yeah. Could you state again the mission of REI?
Sure.
Say that again.
Sure. The mission of REI is to inspire, educate, and outfit for a lifetime of adventure and stewardship.
Outdoor adventure.
See, I think your mission fits very well into the mission of the Bike Path, because this Bike Path wasn't really built just to, just to make it nice for some residents to be able to ride their bikes occasionally. I mean, it was really built as a, sort of as a, it's a community asset. And over the last very few years that it's been completed, it has become a community asset, and people from everywhere are wanting to come and use it. And sometimes we find out about these just in these simple applications for certain events. But considering the size and the mission of your company, I would think that maybe as you have, assuming that these tours are approved, that we might be able to have another conversation, say after the second or third tour, and see what you think about Falmouth. And maybe we could have some sort of a partnership going forward that would benefit the people, your membership, you know, all of your membership, but would also benefit the town as well. Because we have to look at this as an asset. It's an asset to preserve and asset to maintain. And we know that just the maintenance of the Bike Path is a major thing. But we also want to maintain it as the asset that it is. We don't want it just to get away from us and just have people come from everywhere and use it and have no, and we can't get our arms around it. We don't want it to become so huge and so many people there that it fails to be what we intended it to be. So would you consider coming back and talking with us sometime?
Absolutely, I would love it. We do have some relationships in the community in Massachusetts, in the larger community in Massachusetts where we have memorandums of understanding and outline a mutual beneficial relationship, including stewardship and our stewardship efforts. We have, we give, we set aside 3% of our annual business earnings each year to give back to the community in terms of grants for stewardship. We also have a very large core purpose in every store. We have an outreach specialist who focuses on partnering with our communities and giving back where we are recreating. So it is a very nice match and something I would be very interested in coming back to speak about.
That's great. Is that, I think this could be just something very nice for the town of Falmouth, as well as for all the people from REI who want to come.
Sometimes, you know, some things look so wonderful that you've got to wonder what's the drawback. And I just wanted to make sure that it wasn't going to be 10 tours going down the Bike Path.
Well, I don't think that we want to look at this just as a routine event that might occur occasionally.
Well, we've got five dates here.
But this is an opportunity, I think, for us because of the nature of what REI is, that it kind of lends itself to, I think, a really nice partnership going down the road. Any questions or discussion from the board or...
Anyone else?
Yes, Susan.
Nancy.
Nancy. I'm going to be sorry, you know.
Nancy Hayward, precinct five. I live in West Falmouth. I live about three lots from the Bike Path. I'm familiar with REI because we have sons who were in disporting type things. They're in their 40s now. But REI has been around quite a while, as you've pointed out. And I am here to speak for people like myself. And I know it's not what the Bike Path was constructed for. I was a member of the Transportation Management Commission, and I do know that one of the uses of the Bike Path was to be for people who wanted to commute on their bikes, who wanted to commute to Woods Hole. And I know what some of those commuters are like when I'm walking on the Bike Path. And I will say that when I saw that REI was going to have... I saw that REI was going to have, and I didn't actually count these, these bike tours, I was startled and concerned. One of the things about what, walking on the bike path, you hope that the bikers have good etiquette. And they don't always. And good etiquette is the biker who's coming behind you who shouts "on the left." And I thank every single one of them when they go by like that. But it isn't necessarily the good professional-type bikers who call that out. So I have to beware not to get run over. And I think this sounds like an interesting idea. I certainly don't have anything against promoting Falmouth. But I, having had our recent, and my recent issue with the Falmouth Road Race, I'm very glad to have it mentioned that there will be some meetings and reassessments of this to see how it's going, because I would still like to be able to walk on the bike path, because it is one of my places to exercise. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Nancy.
So I'd like to make a motion, then, if there are no more comments.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion that we allow REI bike tours to have a trial year, shall we call it, of dates of May 13th, June 17th, July 7th, ooh, busy weekend, August 18th, and September 8, 2012, to have one tour group going down the bike path in Falmouth to enter into an MMD.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. I will see you again.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Very exciting, actually. But...
I think we...
Can I do some business, Pat?
You may.
And take my lease for my store and assign it to hang up.
Yes.
Please do.
Thank you so much.
Take two.
I think we'll return to the regular agenda and take up the rest of the summary of actions later. So next, we want to have a discussion on the 2012 Road Paving and Maintenance Plan. I assume that Ray Jack is going to discuss this.
Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Yes.
For 2012, some of the roads have been proposed to be completed for major maintenance, and I'll explain that in just a moment. But I wanted to run down the list of the roads and the start and end points. Main Street would be milling and overlaying 5,000 feet from Village Green to Nye Road. Shore Street milling and overlaying 3,600 feet from Main Street to Surf Drive. Thomas Landers Road milling and overlaying 9,000 feet from Route 28 to Blacksmith Shop Road. Seacoast Shores Boulevard milling and overlaying 5,500 feet from Route 28, Dellsworth Drive. Wild Harbor Road overlaying 5,000 feet from Old Main to Arlington, and T-Ticket Path 850 feet from Route 28. I call this major maintenance, and I really want to kind of make a statement with the board and the town on capital planning, if you will, and how this plays out. These are very difficult to come up with, the roads, primarily because the only funding that we actually have available is really Chapter 90 funds with respect to being able to reconstruct the road. And one of the limitations on that is you cannot use the road, the money for watermain work. So therefore, we're trying to skirt around roads that actually need a lot of work, but need a watermain along with it. And in recent years, to give you an example of what happened, we had Falmouth Heights Road had been scheduled at just about the time when I became director, and I had to pull that for a couple of years in order that we could get the watermain installed on that road before we paved it. And I say that because here we are talking about an old watermain on Main Street. But the actual cost of doing that watermain along with the road reconstruction is over $7 million. And I don't believe that the town's going to be able to fund that anytime in the foreseeable future, meaning anytime within the next, say, five to 10 years. So it does become problematic. I think the statement from a capital perspective that I would like the town to see is the total cost of this at major maintenance only, without a reconstruction of a road, without replacing a watermain, is 1.4 million. And that's just over five miles a road. We have over 280 miles of town-owned road. So therefore, it would take 60 years at this rate just to get back to Main Street again. And that is only for major maintenance. That's not, that's without reconstructing any road or replacing a single watermain. If I recall, it was about a little over a year ago, Selecton Braga had asked, when we were talking about capital planning, what number I thought might be appropriate for roads alone. And at that time, I said $3 million. And I think you can see that's where I'm coming from. And even at that, that would give you a 30-year lifecycle on the roads without a watermain. So hopefully, in the foreseeable future, we'll be, we'll be able to start funding a watermain program that will be coincidental with the road paving program, so that we get the best value for the money. Peter McConity's here this evening, and he has a few slides that he could show the audience and those at home, what the start points and end points are on these roads. And then we're both here to answer any questions you may have.
I'm very glad you brought up that issue of the watermain, because we hear many, many times, why aren't we paving roads and not doing the watermines, when we know we have to replace the watermines. So it's pretty obvious why we're not. Peter?
Peter, you can take the lights.
Thank you.
Stand up, please.
More.
Can't see it.
It's warming up.
All right. I thought... Good evening, Peter McConity, acting town engineer. I do have some slides showing the lengths of the roadways. A lot of it is going to be just reiteration of what Mr. Jack had mentioned. Some of the slides that do come up, they're, they're hard to read because they're long lengths of road. So what I did do is made seven copies of the slide presentation, which would be easier to read. As Ray had mentioned, I'll just go through the five roads that we had set up. Main Street, the length is 3,650 feet. Seacoast Shores, 5,500 feet. Shore Street, 3,575 feet. Wild Harbor Road, 5,000 feet. And Thomas B. Landers, 9,000 feet. Main Street, basically what this is, is we're starting at the Town Green and working from the Town Green down Main Street down to Nye Road. The bypass routes, they will, the roadwork will start milling and paving, the schedule is for the milling contractor to start on May 29th. It's the day after the holiday. And for the paving contractor to start on June 8th. And that gives four days, four weekdays, for the contractors to finish their work. Hours of operation, 6:00 AM to 4:00 PM, Monday to Friday. And the traffic along Main Street will reduce to one lane with traffic with the deliveries, so the deliveries will be able to get into the buildings. Eastbound and westbound will be detoured down Catherine Lee Bates Road.
So you do one way, one side of the road first?
Correct.
And then just have one lane open and then switch over?
Correct.
Do you do it kind of piecemeal, or just all the way one side and all the way the other side?
It'll be all the way one side, and then all the way, all the way back the other side.
Melissa?
Will parking still be allowed on Main Street during this, or will there be no parking whatsoever?
There will be a temporary parking ban during the milling operations for them to be able to get in and out of the parking stalls and those areas. Two major days, we're looking at two tops, three, depending on the weather, for the milling operations. And then they'll be getting in, they have to mill around the manholes and the structures.
And the time, did you say, from beginning to end on Main Street?
We have it set up now for the milling contractor to begin on Tuesday, the 29th, the day after the holiday.
And then, how long to complete the project?
And then they'll work Tuesday till Friday. And then the paving contractor, contractor will start on Monday. And two good days of pulling, Monday, Tuesday paving, it should be done Tuesday, depending on the weather. You're talking basically a week, maybe a little over a week.
That's not too bad.
Not too bad.
You know, I'm kind of dumbfounded with the timing. Isn't there a better time here? You're now approached in from the Memorial Day to Labor Day season to do the Main Street in a tourist coastal community.
Correct.
We couldn't have done that in the spring or in the fall?
Well...
I mean, typically, all of our snowbirds are back now. The town is continuing to fill up. And we're going to take the day after Memorial Day and say, hey, let's just, you know what, you got a little shot of business, let's pick up Main Street. Really, seriously? I, I think the timing stinks.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't think anyone put on their thinking cap on this one. Really, Peter, I, I know you guys do a great job, but I think the timing is terrible.
Basically, there, there is no good time to do Main Street. The asphalt plants open up, they start really cooking in mid-April, third week in April. So what we tried to do was, we didn't want to have black asphalt, a mill before the holiday, black asphalt with no parking and no crosswalks. And because the paving, the line striping contractor usually comes in just in mid-June, beginning of June. So we didn't want to have, nothing of the C of black asphalt out there, no lines and no striping. So we thought that to get through the Memorial Day weekend and then disrupt it for one week after that, and then it'll be open, it'll be open for, for the summer.
I, I just can virtually guarantee you that my phone is going to ring off the hook tomorrow. I mean, businesses in this community struggle all winter long to keep their doors open for this community on a 365-day basis. And the one time of the year when they can actually start making a living, we're going to totally disrupt. And for all intents and purposes, everyone will abandon going to Main Street for that week, week and a half, if at all possible. So we're taking one of their 14 weeks a year that they can make a living and taking it away from them. I just think the timing is terrible.
Well, and the, the other option is in the fall. So are there more tourists here in the fall, more people here in the fall than there are now, because the season is just building up? I know we have tourists here, but are they here during the week? Are they here mostly on the weekends? I don't know. I mean, I know these are, these are tough decisions, and they never end up being ones that everybody can enjoy or accept. So, Ray?
And that's it. There isn't a good time. Where we were originally looking at was the possibility of actually getting it done before Memorial Day from a planning perspective. And that didn't work out. And then got so close to coming up on Memorial Day that we thought, well, for that weekend, we know people are going to be taking a long weekend, so they may be taken off in advance of that. And then we didn't want to be disrupting the businesses just before a major holiday weekend. But after the weekend, the question became, would it be acceptable for the businesses in order to have an improved surface, a dramatically improved surface for this summer season? Because there's only one thing that people remember primarily, anyway, about Falmouth, when they do come to visit here, other than the beach, it says Main Street, downtown Falmouth. So if it were acceptable to the businesses, that we would be willing to do that. If it's, if it's not, and we had already spoken with the Chamber of Commerce to try to work with us on that, if the businesses really don't want to do that, we can defer that. But we do realize that even, even on a deferral basis, after Labor Day, I know for years, the town has been trying to extend its postseason. And that's fragile, if you will. And we wouldn't want to try to disrupt that either. So it really became a question of working with Main Street and what Main Street would want to do. So we understand that, and whichever way the town would want to go is fine.
Brad?
I'm going to second what Mr. Murphy said. We just paved Old Barnstable Road. Certainly, we could have paved Main Street well in advance of Memorial Day. And I think doing it after Labor Day is going to make a lot more sense than doing it in the first week of June. It's, well, what can I say? I agree with what you said, Kevin.
I, I mean, I'm a small business person, and the economy is not good to begin with. And then you add, when, when you take out, believe it or not, it doesn't sound like a lot, when you take out a week of people's busy tourism season, you're taking out a percentage of their paycheck. I'm not on Main Street. It doesn't affect me directly. But tourism in its, in a, in entirety affects each and every one of us in this community. I just think that in October would be a great time to do this, after Columbus Day. The plants are still open. They're open through November, I'm pretty sure, until the first snow flies. So you have those type of peak periods. Typically, what people consider summer is Memorial Day to Labor Day. I mean, we don't want to be like, you know, all over the talk shows, there goes Falmouth. They, they dug up the roads the day after Memorial Day. It's like what they do at the bridge. I mean, I, I don't think it's smart planning on our, our part. And it's not good for each and every one of us, because if we go do some of these peripheral roads out in the neighborhoods, Wild Harbor Road and Trotting Park in those periods of time, get them done so we can come and hit Main Street at another time.
Could we hear from Jay Zavala?
We can do that.
Jay, did you have anything you want to say?
Yeah. Thank you, Madam Chairman. Jay Zavala, Falmouth Chamber of Commerce. First of all, I want to thank Ray and the DPW for keeping me informed and sharing information with the chamber about the future and the plans and the variables and the options and choices. To your point, Madam Chairman, in the fall, we are extending the tourism season, and we continue to see far more Europeans coming in the latter part of the fall. The irony is that they are more of the walkers than we find at the early part. They enjoy the strolls around and, and whatnot. What I was listening to and what I've been measuring is the cost-effectiveness of doing something now and the impact that it would cause the business community, not only on Main Street, but as it ripples across the community as well. I don't know that there is a best time. I don't know that there is even a good time for, for this to, to occur. In the wisdom of what is opened in terms of the suppliers and the contractors and those that are engaged in this process, it's my understanding that they're not available in the earlier part of the year. That being what it is, looking for that prime opportunity. I haven't had an opportunity yet to turn to the members of the chamber and the business community at large and ask that question, what is your appetite for a downtime? But of course, someone will always be harmed by that process, and that's why we call it a community. We try to do the greater good for the greater number. So if there's going to be a discussion about the fall, then I certainly want the chamber to be engaged in that as well and, and try to speak to our members about it.
Well, Jay, have you discussed this with the Village Association at all?
We have not.
Oh, you have not?
No.
So they don't know about this?
Well, I, I don't know that they do or not. I know that the DPW has been, you know, coming and sharing information with me, but I haven't gotten the bulk of it until just recently. And so I'd like to turn to others, but I understand the machinations that they've gone through. It's been, it's been shared with me. And it is that crossroad of the resources and the opportunity that the DPW has. Those resources, coupled with the companies and the industry, and, and when it's available, it wasn't available earlier on. Yes, we had some beautiful days when nobody was on Main Street, but there wasn't anyone working either. So I, I don't know when would have been the most propitious time to do this.
Well, as the...
Immediately after Memorial Day, everybody is eager and panting and waiting and hoping and inviting everyone into their front door. As it relates to that period of time, immediately after Memorial Day, as opposed to what, you know, we might see in the fall, it's a toss-up. Some, some members will say, that is my time. That is prime time. And someone else may say, I'm holding off until the fall because we're stretching things in that area. So that discussion hasn't been had yet. We've got a little bit of time to, to query the, the business community.
Can, can we ask that they engage that, that either the town manager seeks out the Village Association, Downtown Village Association?
You know, May 29th or September 30th, or whatever it is. Take your choice.
Well, I mean, we could do it after Columbus Day, too. And I wouldn't say they had to do it the day after Labor Day.
No, I, I meant, it could be done in October. That's true. And, you know, because I don't think we have enough of a feel for what the fall season, I know we've been working so hard to build up.
Sure. Be apprised, the vast majority of the Falmouth Village Association members are also members of the Chamber of Commerce.
Right, yeah.
But that discussion, not only with them and with others, I'd like to see it go forward. First and foremost, I did want to express, and I did, my appreciation to the DPW for coming forward and sharing as much of the information as they have with us to prepare us for this kind of a discussion.
So, so Ray, if we held off for a week or two weeks, is that a possibility, what, while you and Jay and get together with the Village Association and see, and get some feedback from them, and, and then come back to us in, what, a couple of weeks and let us know, or a week?
Now, be certain, the Fountain, I'm not certain if the FEA runs all the way to Nye or, or not. Now, be certain, the Fountain, I'm not certain if the FEA runs all the way to Ny, or, or not, but they have members all along Ny Street.
Oh.
I believe the, the stretch is from the Village Green to Ny. But, you know, there are merchants and, and business people all along that stretch.
Yeah, Ray, can I just get a response and then you-
Yes, as I said, we would've liked to have actually done it sooner, but that didn't, that didn't pan out. And as far as Old Barnstable goes, that was a different type of project. That was asphalt injection with paving versus milling with paving, so there were different companies involved on that. But we just wanted to be able to give the business, businesses along Main Street that opportunity to be able to decide if they wanted to do it at that time. Um, and that's why if, if the business community came back, wanted to do it, that would be, that would be fine with us. And if they wanted to defer it, that would be fine as well.
Madam Chairman, how about-
Kevin, go ahead.
How about, you know, time is the essence here, because if you're gonna do it after Memorial Day, you'd really need to make that decision by next week, I would imagine. We're, we're, you know, at the fourteenth of May.
Sure.
And so, how about that we ask that, that this discussion happens sooner versus later?
Sure.
And that we come back next week about this one road and the timing of that.
Correct.
That, that works.
No, I have a question regarding, I mean, I, I've been on the Cape the majority of my life, and I've seen, you know, Junes that are the coldest months of the year, the coldest, wettest months of the year. And I've also seen snow in October. What happens if we defer this to the, the shoulder season beyond and then we can't, um, get the project in because of inclement weather and things like that? I mean, what, how bad is Main Street? I, I don't consciously see it when I drive down it, but then again, I think I actually avoid it.
Inclement weather affects us much more in the spring than it does in the summertime. Because we have a very narrow window when the plants open, and then we hit the holidays. Uh, and we generally have a lot of rain. This year, we had very little rain, but that's usually what's very disruptive. So we have a small window with a lot of problems in the spring. In the fall, it's usually a longer window and fewer, fewer problems in the fall. But what, the only other difference that it does make is we would have to apply a level of maintenance to Main Street through the summertime. And that's part of it there. It's not a significant cost, but it will be a cost that we would have to incur on Main Street.
And if for some reason we can't get this done this year because it had been deferred to the fall, and so, and then things change and we have to wait until next year, um, how, is, are we gonna have major problems with Main Street throughout the winter? Do you anticipate?
It's, one of the reasons why we're even promoting Main Street as a project is to save bigger money over time from the maintenance aspect of it. We're, we're starting to incur a higher level of maintenance on Main Street, it's falling apart now. So, in order to make it and maintain it serviceably, so that it's safe, it's gonna take a higher level of maintenance starting now.
Thank you.
But we will be able to make it.
Um, just two points. One, it's worth noting that there's a, a restaurant here on Main Street that closed for several days, um, earlier, I think it was last month or this month, for renovations. So this is the time when they're doing their own reservation, or, excuse me, renovations. Um, I think clearly that's a signal as to when we should be doing our own renovations when it comes to infrastructure. Um, the other thing is, as far as the weather goes, I think you could roll the die, as you noted, Ms. Fire Doug. The, uh, you know, a few summers ago, our June was nothing but rain and was the, one of the wettest on records. So, uh, the, we could have the same thing this June, you know, June first could hit, we could have the same problem. But I think we have to try to be more cognizant of, of the local calendar and, um, less concerned about the, the potential for weather.
You might know these complaints are going on all over Cape right now, too. If you drive anywhere on Cape Cod, you will find state working everywhere on all their, their roads. And people are just, you can't get anywhere and you come to a detour. It happens to me every single time now because it's going on everywhere. But I agree, let's, let's, um, Jay and Ray and Peter can talk with the village people and come back to us next week and see if we can maybe wrap this up with a final date.
Sure.
Okay, thank you very much. So let's, we can move on to-
Would you like to finish with the two minutes on the presentation?
Yes, yes, thanks.
I'd like to thank you, Selectman Murphy, for bringing up that, to, to expedite this because we do have the, um, great, great milling contractor and the asphalt contractor set up for the twenty-ninth. Now, what we can do is, we can push them down the road to the, to the following roads. So we can take care of that. Uh, we had, this was in order, the way we had this set up, was Main Street, Seacoast Shores, and then Shore Street. We did not want Main Street and Shore Street going on at the same time, we'd be tying up all the downtown. So, if Main Street gets pushed off to the fall, we'll push probably Main Street and Shore Street off into the fall. So it would be, be open. Seacoast Shores, we're looking at Route twenty-eight down to Ellsworth Drive. Um, it's approximately, uh, the fifty-five-hundred feet. Um, if you've driven Seacoast Shores, there's a lot of patches, cuts, infrared areas down there. So what they'll do is, they're gonna, they're gonna mill a small amount of asphalt and they're gonna lay a thick, uh, layer of asphalt that'll bring the, it'll bring the pavement up. It'll get more, it'll get more years down the road. Shore Street, depending on Main Street, we'll, um, we'll, we'll take a look at that. But that's basically from Main Street down to Surf Drive. Wild Harbor Road from Old Main Street, Old Main Road to Arlington Street is the, the next road that we'll be looking at, it's five thousand feet, approximately twenty-two feet wide. Uh, that area, we will not be milling, we'll be doing some cut and patch areas and we'll be doing asphalt overlay.
Will, will that include something related to the storm, storm drainage where all those puddles form in a rainstorm on Wild Harbor between Chester Street and Phyllis, on Rider Road?
Yeah, we'll be, we'll be looking at that. We didn't, we did not put in for drainage on that area. Um, we were just putting in for the asphalt overlays on those areas. But, um, a, as the, we went out there earlier this month, there's a lot of areas out there where you can see that the water stands and there's a lot of potholes and where the asphalt is cracked and popped up. The, the asphalt is deteriorating. The, with, with the roads that we choose, it, not every road is built the same. Some roads in, in past years have been built better and thicker to receive trucks and, and vehicles better than other roads. So, you might have a, a road that was paved fifteen years ago, you might have a road that was paved thirty years ago. The thirty-year-old work, road looks better than the fifteen-year-old work because it was paved either thicker and paved better during the paving operations. So that's why we picked these, these roadways. Thomas Landers, we're looking at the, uh, the on-ramps from Route twenty-eight down to Blacksmith Sharp Road, and the reason for that is, is the heavily, it's a heavily-traveled truck route. It's where all the concrete plants are, the waste management facility.
Uh, Brent, yes.
So those are the roads, and that's nine thousand feet. So, we're looking at about five miles of roadway.
Brent?
This particular road is also identified by the Bike Ways Committee as, as a, a bike route. And in fact, you do see a lot of bicycles along this road. Is there any plan in this process to widen it some? I know Thomas Landers is, is one of the wider road layouts in town, and there's certainly room for it. And I think it would certainly improve the safety of the road if, if that could be done.
Yeah, what we'll look at is, when they pave this, we'll look at, there's a couple of areas up there that we have to look for drainage, and then we'll look with, with the asphalt. We'll see if we can get another foot, or two feet off the edge of the road, if we can do that. It, the reason I do have reservations about this with the Bike Ways, the Bike Ways, they like to use the main arteries in town, but the problem is, is the main arteries are also the heavily-traveled truck routes. And, um, it, they heavily, fast speeds too, over thirty miles an hour, forty miles an hour. So that's what we have to look at also. But we were, I, I did put into our estimates on this as, of, uh, see if we can get a couple of feet extra on the sides of the roadway. We're looking at, we'll be looking at a wider fog lane, a wider shoulder. If we can do that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? So, um, did you want to talk at all about the crack sealing, road striping, or the patching?
Crack sealing's been done.
Oh, that's already been done?
It's already been, it's already been done. What will happen with the striping is, that's more for, of a question with, with John Lyons, but with our Highway Superintendent. But these roads will be avoided, they won't strike these roads. When these roads get paved, that's when we strike them, Main Street and Shore Street, Seacoast Shores.
Okay, so we don't actually take a vote on this? This is just a discussion?
This was just a presentation.
Right.
And, and I'm glad it came up, and I'm glad we did this, because exactly-
I'm glad you did too.
For the Main Street is the, was gonna be the big question.
And so we'll take up, um, Main Street next week? Any other questions for, uh, Ray or Peter or Jay? Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay, the next is the, um, we're gonna talk about the capital needs and the capital exclusion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd just like to, um-
Manager.
Just like to piggyback on the excellent comments that Selectman Murphy made regarding the proposed capital exclusion. As the board is aware, this is appearing on the townwide ballot a week from tomorrow. And it is a, a continuation of an existing tax effort. Eight hundred thousand dollars were set aside in the annual town meeting in two thousand and eleven for the study regarding a water filtration plant. And this proposed capital exclusion would continue that same tax effort without the need for a, an additional tax. But, uh, most importantly, it would allow really a, a one-year, but very significant, uh, capital plan as this board has concurd in and recommended. Uh, just to, to summarize a little further, now the board may recall Article twenty-one in the recently concluded annual town meeting included the, uh, proposed fiscal two thousand and thirteen capital improvements plan. And an important component of that is the proposed eight hundred thousand dollar capital exclusion. But there's really three parts to that, uh, important proposal. It's a proposal totaling, uh, one point six-two million dollars. Eight hundred thousand dollars would be voted and subject to a voter approval a week from tomorrow on the townwide ballot. Uh, it, uh, the, it was affirmed by, of course, by town meeting and by this Board of Selectmen, which is why it appears on the ballot. But also importantly, a town meeting as part of Article twenty-two. Uh, the town meeting, as recommended by the Finance Committee, set aside five hundred and twenty thousand dollars for capital stabilization fund. So that is actually already appropriated for FY thirteen. It would be supplemented by this eight hundred thousand dollar capital exclusion if the voters in their wisdom firm the accident and recommendation of the Selectmen, the Finance Committee, and town meeting earlier. Uh, then the final or third step in this process would be the set aside of three hundred thousand dollars from additional local revenue, which would be identified for the November two thousand and twelve town meeting. Would be reviewed by this Board of Selectmen, of course, by the Finance Committee, and ultimately, uh, would be subject to approval by town meeting in November. So that our total package for those three components would be one point six-two million dollars. Uh, unlike the capital set aside, which the town has enjoyed for the past three years, which fundamentally applied to public works, this proposed capital plan would be, have townwide impact. As Selectman Murphy has noted, it benefits both police and the fire department in, in terms of communications, vehicles and equipment. Public works as well, including the, uh, Beach Department involving vehicles, road and bridge repairs, water and wastewater repairs, maintenance and building and structural, structural repairs and maintenance benefits townwide. It would also involve information and technology and GIS for equipment and software. It benefits the school department and the natural resources in terms of vehicles and equipment. And, uh, last but not least, importantly, Harbor Master and Recreation for a total of one point six-two million. And, uh, Madam Chair, as you and the board are aware, there have been several discussions over the past year involving the Finance Committee and a capital budget committee, which identified really three million dollars in annual capital needs, uh, townwide. That's been commented on earlier this evening. Uh, this, of course, is considerably less than that three million dollars in annual need. However, uh, as this board has recognized, it's a, it's an extraordinarily important first step. And it's one year only, it's not multiple years, uh, and it does maintain the tax effort which was already set aside, uh, last year and would, would continue it without the need for additional, uh, new taxation and new spending as a result of that. Uh, but it does allow the town to begin very, very important, uh, process of catch-up in terms of equipment, maintenance, and really our, our stewardship responsibilities throughout the town and all our departments in really taking care of what the taxpayers in their wisdom have allowed us to deliver and to maintain the basic day-to-day town services in every neighborhood. So we appreciate, uh, the board's support of this, as you have already done, town meeting, Finance Committee. And we're hopeful that residents in their wisdom, a week from tomorrow, will support this eight hundred thousand dollar, one-year-only capital exclusion, which merely maintains the existing tax effort which is already in place. So be happy to answer any questions, Madam Chair, that the board would have, or any supplementary comments.
Any questions or comments for Brent?
Um, one comment, one question. Comment is that I'm a little concerned that, um, we may be confusing people. One of the things that was discussed several times during town meeting with this particular article and notably as well with the precinct meetings, was that there was some confusion over what it is exactly that we're trying to do here. And I think that the KISS principles applies, keep it simple. What we're asking people to do is put eight hundred thousand dollars into savings that we're going to draw upon perhaps in the fall, perhaps next year. I think any discussion of how this is going to be spent, or what we'd like to do, or our wish lists, or anything else like that, is gonna confuse people. And certainly, it, it, there's the potential created that somebody could vote against this because they don't like what's on the wish list. I think we really have to drill the point home that we're not spending any money here, that this is putting money in the bank. And to that end, um, that brings me to the question that I have, is I'm wondering if, I understand that we cannot advocate for this sort of thing because of the way state laws are in. But, and given that Town Council is here, and I apologize, Madam Chair, if I may ask Town Council a question. Is it still possible to put some sort of an explanation into the papers or even an advertisement in the paper to say, "Look, this is what this article does." It puts eight hundred thousand dollars into savings and not necessarily take a position for or against it in such an editorial or, or an advertisement, but simply to explain what it is that we're trying to do here so that people understand that we're not spending any money, we're trying to save money in this process. Through you, Madam Chair, if I may ask, Council?
The prohibition is against the use of town resources to advocate for the position of a question on the ballot. Does not prohibit you, as an individual Selectman, from advocating for it. If you would like to stay here till eleven o'clock tonight and talk about it, you can. And the rest of you can also. And you can also encourage your friends to, uh, to do the same thing. You could not use town resources or pay for an ad in the newspaper, but if you found someone who'd be willing to put up the money and do it for you, you can do that.
Okay. That answers my question, thank you, Madam Chair.
Yeah, I, I think you're, you're right, Brent, about keeping it really simple. And the fact that we're not making choices regarding what to purchase this time. We're taking the opportunity of the retiring debt and keeping the tax rate the same, uh, putting the money away because you have to do it at this time of the year because that's the way the final municipal finance laws operate. And then come the fall, then, then you execute whatever the capital plan is and how those funds could be used. So, um, it's, it's, and it's one time, it's only one year. It's not an eight hundred thousand that goes on forever. It's one year to help us go. Heather?
The, the only thing I might add to, to Selectman Putnam's point is that it's a stabilization fund, and those funds are even more secure than an, an ordinary appropriation. Those will in fact require a two-thirds vote to vote out for those. So, any project will have to get, gain two-thirds approval from town meeting in order for them to move forward. So they actually have more security than funds appropriated otherwise.
Right, Kevin?
I have seen in the past, and very successfully done, where there is a letter to the editor which could be signed by each and every member of the Board of Selectmen. And, uh, maybe I'd encourage Mr. Putman to write such a letter.
I think I volunteered myself today.
But if you could disseminate that individually to us, that would be, um, you know, that maybe each and every one of us could then sign off on it and sign on to that letter. Because I believe there's unanimous support in this board for that.
And it should probably be in Friday's paper.
Keep the letter simple.
Yep.
Yeah, it should probably be Friday's paper too, because, uh, so it'd have to be done by Thursday at noon, I would think. You know, thereabouts, Friday morning, maybe?
I can let him know.
You can let him know?
Hold the presses.
Hold the presses.
Hold the two paragraphs of space.
But you're right, I think that's really important, and I think that kind of a letter could, that's a good idea. It would be, um, very valuable, so if you kept, keep it really simple- it really simple, these are the points, bang, 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 this is what we're asking you to do. And, and, I'm not going to go on and on. So, so we don't need a vote to do that, we just have Brett's enthusiastic acceptance of the challenge, right?
I just want to thank Madam Chair, members of the board, Selectman Murphy, Selectman Putnam, for that, for the clarification, all members of the board, for this opportunity to provide that information to the public about this critical vote a week from tomorrow. So, this is the time for all those who want to set those stabilization dollars aside to reinvest in the town, this is the opportunity. So, thank you for that opportunity to discuss it further.
Very good. Okay, so now we're going to move to the minutes.
Two minor corrections, Madam Chair.
A correction?
Yeah.
Oh, I got to find them first, hold on a second.
First correction is, in the calling to order, we went into executive session until 6:45 in the old water pump room, and then also on page two, I believe it was, committee interviews, towards the bottom. The first one, Kathleen Clover, the motion was to appoint Ms. Clover, if an R, if it was any. Those are the only-
Okay. Heather?
I have our issue on the executive session.
Oh, okay. Well, let's approve these first, so all those in-
I'll move them as corrected.
As corrected, is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained. Four in favor, one abstention. Okay, the executive session minutes for 6:30 on April 30. Heather?
I'd ask, just for the board's discussion, to bring them back next week, I have a couple of minor comments I'd like to make on them.
Okay.
Just want to acknowledge also that Carol does a superb job on these minutes, I just want, thank you, everyone.
Yeah.
So, I move that we defer until next week.
Is there a second?
Before we table them until next week?
It'd be continued would be-
Continued until next week?
Continued.
Yeah. Is there a second?
Yeah.
Oh, he seconded. Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Abstained. Four in favor, one abstention. I was not here.
Yes, someone?
Okay, now we're going to go back to the summary of actions.
45.
Yes, number four, which was held by Mr. Murphy.
Madam Chairman, just for disclosure purposes, on the whole of an all-alcoholic seasonal liquor license, I only have one question, if my memory serves me correctly, last year they sampled the wines at the farmer's market, and because they sampled, we required liquor liability insurance because, although they had it, that today the town ballot is additionally insured, because in fact, they are town property.
Mm-hmm.
So, I'd make a motion to approve, but if they are going to sample, if they be required to have liquor liability insurance and provide us as an additionally insured.
Yeah, I think they already had the last term, as you said, and I'll second that.
Okay, so, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous.
And on number five, again, Madam Chairman, on the whole of an all-alcoholic seasonal liquor license, I make a motion to approve Salford Burd Sanctuary Food and Wine Tasting at Born's Farm on 616.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. And then we have the last, which is the annual seasonal license renewals. I only have two here, is that right? The lodging houses, Seashell Guest House, East Falmouth, and Copper Beach Inn in Falmouth.
Second.
All of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Okay, are there any reports from the selectmen?
Just a quick one. Last week, the Economic Development Subcommittee for the Local Comprehensive Plan met with some of the employees at HR at HUI, and we continued to prod for things that, how Falmouth and the nonprofit scientific sector can work together. One issue that did seem to come up repeatedly with the people we were speaking to is the need for daycare in town. I just wanted to get that out to the public. And then also, we are meeting again this Wednesday at 6:00 PM here in Town Hall to discuss some of our findings and to see where we need more information, and see how we can incorporate our findings into some kind of finished product. But, this is, we're still at the early stages, it seems like, for this project, but it's still a fascinating project. That's all.
Anybody else?
I'm going to hold, I have eight things, I'm going to hold them to next week.
Okay. Town managers' report?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As the board will recall, prior to my arrival as town manager, there were discussions and deliberations underway regarding the upgrade and the improvement of pedestrian access between the main library and the Mullet Hall School along Catherine Lee Bates Road, and I'm pleased to advise that we have a tentative construction plan, which will be undergoing final review by the parties, including the school committee and the library board. If all can proceed as we hope, the construction of this important pedestrian public safety improvement will occur yet this summer. I want to thank all those involved for the continued cooperation and collaboration, particularly our colleagues in the public works, Ray Jack, Peter McConity, and John Lyons, for their commitment to this important improvements. Under separate cover, I've transmitted a copy of the proposed improvement plans to the board, and we're awaiting final review and action by the school committee and the library board, as I've noted, Madam Chair. The reason for the timing on this, if it can go forward, is to have it completed prior to the onset of school, beginning of the next school year. And also, as a follow-up to the inquiry last week on committee reappointments, Diane Davidson has included information for the board on that process and schedule going forward. I want to thank Diane for doing that, and that concludes my report, Madam Chair.
Any other comments from the board? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to adjourn the regular meeting and go into executive session for the purposes of pending claims and litigations regarding wind turbines, since we did not get to that in our earlier meeting, and then to return to open session at the end, so that the board has comments, public comments to make, that can be made at the end of that executive session. Summow?
Second.
Okay.
Kevin Murphy, aye.
Fritag, aye.
Fritag, aye.
Putnam, aye.
Putnam, aye. And we'll take a two-minute recess.